If you'd like, we distributed a brief agenda for this fourth work session. And I think we're at a point of determining a couple of things. One is what type of levy to have. And while there's about a dozen different choices, our conversation centered on two, a traditional current expense levy or a levy to avoid an operating deficit. The second decision is the length of time. A current levy can be one to five years or for a continuing period of time. Or a levy to avoid an operating deficit can be anywhere between one and 10 years. And then the final decision is the millage amount. And I think of the options we discussed before, my notes showed were down to 3.9, 4.9, or 5.9. We dismissed a 6.9. There's been one significant subsequent event since we last met, and that's been our health insurance renewal. And I layered that in on some new scenarios I presented to you. So I guess all I'll say is that a current expense levy is one that's expressed as millage amount on the ballot. That's what most of our levies are. It will say a 3.9 mil levy for either up to five years or for a continuing period of time for general operating expenses. And there's no restrictions on how we spend the money. A levy to avoid an operating deficit can be called that or can be called an emergency levy. We, given where we were in 2004, are trying not to associate emergency and finances together. So the alternative label, if you'll remember the last time we renewed the levy originally passed during fiscal emergency, we changed the title from emergency levy to a levy to avoid an operating deficit. The only difference between the two, a levy to avoid an operating deficit expresses the dollar amount to be raised. And that amount of money will come to the district every year regardless of changes in the tax base. If there's major new construction in the district, we would not benefit from that. If there's major reductions in tax value, if, say, a major property in the district were to burn down or would be sold for half price or something, that would not affect the amount of money. We're assured to get the same amount every year. A current expense levy does, it's based on the millage amount. There's an annual adjustment for inflation so that we will not get more money simply because of the triennial update or six-year reappraisal. Properties increase in value as a result of inflation or current market conditions. But if there's new construction, we would benefit from that and it would produce new revenue.
Which was the levy on that one?
Current expense levy. However, as we saw happen during the Great Recession, we actually saw values decrease, in which case our revenues would decrease. That's, in my career, that's the only time that's happened since the House Bill 920 came into effect in 1976. But it is a possibility. So the one levy would allow the potential for growth if there was new construction. The other fixes the dollar amount. Given our community, given the current economy, you know, I'm not aware, and Matt and I have talked about it and gauge the city officials, of any really huge new development. There's a housing development that's kind of getting underway. No significant mall expansion, no new commercial area being developed. So the tax base, there'll be some flux, but we're not expecting any major changes, at least in the short term. So that would suggest a current expense levy would probably produce about the same amount of money every year, the same as if it were to avoid an operating deficit. So I guess the first discussion point is, is there a preference on which of those two? And I'm not even going to talk about, there's incremental levies or substitution layers that are very complex and difficult to explain, quite frankly. Since 1990 and the Deraulph Supreme Court decision, the legislature has given us six new types of levies to ask for in lieu of giving us more money to be constitutional in the funding.
So the more complicated they get, the more on the ballot, correct?
Correct.
So we have to add more language. It becomes more confusing to the electorate.
Yes. And historically, we've only had, as you can see in the one exhibit that's in our fiscal projections every year, it's also in your packet, we've only had two types of levies in our district, and those are ones that communities asked for. A current operating levy is what all of ours are with the exception of what was originally the emergency levy in 2004. It's now a levy to avoid an operating deficit. So the community kind of understands both of those types, I believe. To go to an incremental levy or a substitute levy or some of the others would require, it's language the voters have never seen before, requires an explanation that expands the scope of any levy campaign that we would have to simply explain what the heck is this thing. So I think when Matt and I talked, we stepped back, and I think our conversations, the last time we were together, began to look more at the two more traditional types of levies.
When I looked at the, all the information that you were kind enough to send us, the avoiding an operating deficit to generate a predictable amount that really is replacing the money that no longer comes from the state, that just made a lot of sense to me as a homeowner, as well as a board member, that the reason why we can't contract our expenses anymore because we have mandated services and so many children to educate and so on. So it really is to avoid an operating deficit, to replenish what we're not getting from the state once our reserves are exhausted. And 4.9 mils, based on all the statistical information, made the most sense to me because I think levy fatigue is something that the voter is frustrated by. There's cost to have a campaign. And even though 3.9 might be easier to pass, you're going to be out of money in a relatively short order. Where I thought the 4.9, five-year levy to avoid an operating deficit was probably the best middle course and reasonable based on fiscal responsibility, the oversight of our citizens committee, our actual needs, the fact that our reserves will be exhausted and so we're not broke again the year after the levy starts.
And I'll add some context to it. On the one page partway back on ballot issue history back to 1981, 1981, we had a 9.5 mil levy to fail. We followed by an eight mil to pass. Then we had a 6.9 to pass. June of 92, we had a 4.9. March of 96, we had a 4.5. And then we, which, and the aberration was at three mil in November of 13, followed then by an emergency levy. So what you're suggesting, if I look back to the, over the last 30 years, 4.5, 4.9, 6.9, 8.9 has been the numbers. And then the other consideration, when we talked about the research study we had conducted a few years ago to try to determine the sweet spot, is levies up to four mils pass on average 61% of the time. Levies up to six mils pass 50% of the time. So there is that drop off from 3.9 to 4.9, but it's still, the average passage rate is 50% or above. Different economic times, different story for us to tell. But again, our voting history is, in 81, it took two tries. In 88, it took three tries. And 90, it took two tries. In 92, it took two tries. In 95 and 96, it took three tries. The emergency levy initially took two tries. So our history is that it takes more than one try. We have a wonderful story to tell. On average statewide, levies last and fund three, if you're lucky, four years of operating budgets. Our is funded 12 years. So we do have a very strong story to tell, but we also have a voting history for this community. So all those things kind of factor in. And where you as the eyes and ears and representatives of the community kind of have the best instincts on what's that right number, 4.9's right? You're right. That gets us very close with a couple of good breaks of balancing that fourth year.
Can I jump in for a second?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we all agree that, at least for the moment, we're going to table 6.9, correct?
Yes.
Can we agree to table 3.9 as well? Because I think we would agree that that's just not going to cut it. It's too low. Would you guys agree with that?
I just, and this is just my comment, I was looking at the same sheet I think you're looking at. It says, "The results show that a proposed tax rate less than five mils are more likely than not to achieve success of the ballot." So that's just a comment if you're going to go with 5.9. I thought this school tax levy...
Say that one again.
Analysis.
Yeah. Which line? Oh, you're reading that?
The second paragraph at the bottom.
At seven mils. Right, at seven mils.
Less than five mils. Less than five mils are more likely to pass.
Yes. Looking up at the chart, right?
I think 6.9 is way too high.
Okay. So I guess I'm just kind of trying to do a process of elimination. If we could get rid of 6.9, and if we could just review 3.9 and agree whether or not we want to eliminate that, then we could kind of hone in on 4.9 and 5.9.
Okay.
Can we look at 3.9 for a minute? And see if this is worth considering or worth throwing out? Because in my opinion, I don't think it's going to give us enough traction. And I'm with Ginny on voter fatigue, and I think if we're going to make this worth our while, the 3.9 is not worth shooting for right now. Does anybody agree with that or disagree?
Think about the cost of the levy campaign. And that levy, and it's not going to even last. We're going to constantly be asking for money, or what will seem like constantly.
Exactly. We'll get 18 months in, and we're already in the...
It's just not going to get us very far.
Because I think this community is proud of the district, is proud of the education that children receive, feels energized by a lot of the initiatives, and that they recognize they're getting a quality product, and they value that. They value it particularly if they have kids in the district. But if they have children, or they don't have children at home anymore, that they recognize in terms of stable community services that a quality school district is essential to a perception of a community as having, being a good place to live and having stable real estate values and so forth. So I believe that the community would be supportive of a levy in general, and that they like what's been done over these last 10-plus years, that it's, the evolution has been a good one.
You know, our last session, we talked about the fact that this 12 years has been sort of an anomaly. And the new norm is kind of going to be like a three- to four-year levy cycle. And Dan, if I'm reading these sheets right, the 3.9 is going to get us, what, maybe two years?
Yes.
The max.
If you take the best-case scenario of 2% less spending, 1% more tax revenues, then yes, it's assured of the 3.9 would fund 16, 17, 17, 18, 18, 19, but leave a $14 million deficit the following year. So it could fund three years under the best-case scenario. Based on the current fiscal projections, it would only fund two years.
What do you guys say? Can we throw out 3.9 and focus on 4.9 and 5.9?
I think we can throw out 5.9 and 6.9, but I don't want to toss out 3.9 at this point.
Okay.
And narrow it to one. Because that's basically what we'd be doing. Because 5.9 is, if you're talking 5.9 and 6.9, that's going to be three, two tries of failure and one try success. That puts us out.
Well, we've already thrown out 6.9, right?
Right.
I'd like to look at 5.9.
5.9, we could count on going three times to the ballot.
Then one other piece of information I want you to look at as you're discussing those possibilities. I ran the levy factor per $100,000 home for both a 4.9 and a 5.9. So you'll see a 4.9 mil levy per $100,000 home would be $171.50 more a year.
What page was that on, Dan?
It's after, the next, about four pages back from this one with the blue highlighting that you were just looking at. I probably, I should have numbered it.
That's okay. I capped a lot of the pages, and I don't think I capped that one.
Yeah, so...
Yeah. There's the levy.
4.9's $171.50 per $100,000 home. A 5.9 mil levy is $206.50 per $100,000 home. So just, again, another piece of data as you're contemplating.
So you're basically looking at $35 more.
Correct. It's $35 per thousand, or $100,000, yes.
And if I'm recalling what the focus groups and information that was gathered for us, that the number, the actual amount is not a relevant factor in voter decision-making. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
So it's the millage. How does the millage sound? What it generates is less important than what the millage sounds.
Remember that community survey, I think we saw sensitivity to increase on affordability and justification of need as millage amount went up. And that's kind of general experience, and it's borne out by this research that we had done on where's the sweet spot for millage. And as you would expect, a higher the millage, a higher the homeowner cost, but less likely it is to the pass absent some kind of extraordinary need.
So as I look at the two sheets, one is titled, "2016, New 3.9 Mils, 2% Less Expense, 1% More Income." And then the same sheet for the 4.9 mils. According to this, whether it's 3.9 or 4.9, it gets us to the same point about three years out. It's just that the deficit is different.
Yes.
So no matter what we choose between the 3.9 and 4.9, the time factor is going to be the same. So either one of those, I don't know if that voter fatigue is at least an equal argument.
It's the same for 5.9.
And the same for 5.9.
It's just a lower deficit, but we're still, it's going to be a deficit spending.
We're looking at maybe three years, you know.
Which is the historic norm for any school district in Ohio. We're going back to normal. And to Bill's point, the one other thing I would add is, the 3.9 scenario, in my mind, kind of best case, one more percent of tax revenues underspent by 2%, gets us to a $14 million deficit in the fourth year. At 4.9, it gets us to eight. Over four years, that's $2 million a year, or it's $2 million upfront of reoccurring expense to get there. It would take something out of the ordinary to happen, but obviously, again, the smaller the deficit, the more opportunities for Matt and all of us to come up with, what is that out-of-the-ordinary thing that needs to be done to reduce cost? But it's still...
But we are running out of opportunities to reduce.
Yes, yes.
Right. Those have been exhausted.
We're kind of... Our enrollment is...
Yes.
It's levelled off.
So, yeah, so let's talk a little bit about enrollment. It's flattened. I mean, we were in...
We're still, we're still going to go down. We're still going to go down a little bit, but it's starting to flatten. We're about 7,700 now. I would say at our bottom, we'll be 75, 7400.
Yeah. I've got, on page 36 of the fiscal projections, the enrollment study update we had done in 2013 is predicting 135 less students next year, then 81 less, then 107 less, then 50 less. So as Matt's saying, it's kind of flattening out, and we're going to bottom out based on that trend right around 7,000. We were around 70, just under 7,400 on the official count week in October.
So is there kind of a ballpark figure of, at what point do we reduce our resources? You know, do you need the same number of resources for 7,700 students as you do 7,500, but not 7,300? So is there a, we have no way of knowing that?
I don't want to say there's no way of knowing that, but that difference isn't great enough where it's going to be, in my opinion, a substantial cost savings somewhere.
Well, save.
Okay, so the reduction in student population is not going to trigger some...
We still have reductions built into the forecast.
Okay.
There's eight, nine this coming year.
Okay.
One straight eight, eight regulars.
Yeah.
So they're already...
Yeah, there's nine reductions built into the fiscal projections for 16, 17, nine, and 17, 18. Then it drops to one in the last two years as we kind of reach that bottom point of declining enrollment.
The enrollment, the declining enrollment is going to be upper middle school and high school? I mean, because they're, the lower numbers are coming up.
Oh, okay.
Our classes are about 500 now.
At the high school?
No.
In the elementary school.
So we'd have to be careful not to make too many reductions because there'd be, the classes will get a little bit larger.
Larger, I don't...
But not significantly, but...
Right. And I don't think anybody wants to limit programming at this point.
Right.
I don't think we're in that...
What I would hope is that the community values the current program of studies, you know, the scope of what students have in terms of educational opportunities and extracurricular resources and so on. And still, under that prudent umbrella, I think if we ask for what we know is needed to maintain what we're doing, that the community hopefully will respond favorably. And then going forward, you kind of see how it plays out, always trying to be as resourceful and prudent as you can. And maybe you can get a fourth year if all things, you know, the wind's blowing the right way from Columbus. But I think if we ask for too little, we're, the community will feel like, well, why didn't you ask for what you needed?
I agree.
You know? Because even if it's easy to pass, we're going to have to come back in 18 months and say, well, you know, bad news is, we need more money.
And that's money spent running a campaign, getting on the ballot.
Right. The man-hours that it takes to put all that together.
Trust in the district, in the community.
Key is...
You're going to have that anyway, though, no matter, no matter which one.
That's right.
It's just the deficit that you're trying to cover is going to be more of a challenge. So on the downside to that, if the levies were to fail, your cuts are going to be much more substantial because you have larger deficits to cover them once it does get to its...
Where if we could pass a 4.9 in a relatively efficient amount of time, then we don't start piling up problems where we have to cut deeply enough that it really hurts students and the education that we can offer them. I don't think anybody wants to see that. But is 5.9 passable? That's the magic question.
Based on the research we have done in the history, from 4.0 to 5.9, the historical passage rate's about the same.
About the same.
Now, this is statewide averages, not unique to Northeast Ohio or to Lake County or to us. And again, that's where your judgment from, where's that sensitivity, great point on the cost factor to the voter.
I'm kind of leaning 4.9, I think.
Can we look at the sheets without anticipated or possible 2% less expense? Can it keep us in reality? What do you think, Dan? You've got scenarios that show 2% less expense, and so that really moves the dial.
What can you give us, Dan?
Each cluster has best-case scenarios in that millage.
Six mils. Probably what doesn't have the 2%.
For the last three years, at the request of the Finance Committee and their recommendations to the Board, and as guidance for me, we've continued to refine our projection models, both for budgeting and fiscal projections. But the accuracy rate is right around 96%. Since I joined the district in 2004, we've seen about a one percentage point increase in accuracy. With the refinements we made, we're hopeful this year it'll be even a little better. So it's, you know, I'm not going to ever be wild and crazy when it comes to talking about numbers with you.
Right.
But historically, we've been around 96% spend of the budget. Again, I'm hopeful that we've, some of the formula refinements have moved that up a little bit. Whether or not it's to 98 or not, time will tell. Part of it is, you know, what kind of, so far, winter's been great. You know, our spend on utilities and rock salt and all that stuff is hundreds of thousands of dollars and could be as much as a percentage point of the budget depending on the weather patterns that we have throughout the year, whether it's too hot in the spring or too cold.
Well, earlier this evening, you said through the first six months, we're 8%...
We're tracking very well, yes.
The whole budget right now.
Correct.
8% this year.
Our expenses...
That's 15, 16.
Well, part of that's a little bit of time. If you remember last year at this time, we advanced funded August, two years ago, about $600,000 of purchase of technology, student devices to roll out. So a little bit of that's going to work itself out from the timing of spending a year ago was higher because of that advanced funding right at the beginning of the year. And this year, it was more of a normal pattern. But right now, it looks like we're tracking to underspend absent some, something changing between 1 and 2%. Yeah, the 8% is part of that distortion from the advanced spending you're right for in the school year.
Our expenses have been consistently about 3% below, right, Dan?
Yes.
Because I look at that every month.
Yes.
And fuel has been trending down, too.
Yes.
So that's probably been saving us on the transportation expense.
And, you know, and I factored in our healthcare renewal in these sheets I gave you as our most current subsequent event, as well as the Senate Bill 208 change with some temporary relief from the loss of tangible personal property. So, yes, it's, you know, if you, I like the 98% number, and I think that's what the Finance Committee, when I talk to them about the different scenarios they present to the Board, that's one of the ones they suggested I present to you for discussion purpose, not necessarily recommending that's what they believe is going to happen. So again, your judgment on, you know, if we get some good breaks, you know, the best that's going to happen is going to buy down the deficit in that fourth year in 1920. I don't envision something happening that all of a sudden, you know, the one mil factor generates about $1.7 million a year. That's about one, you know, our income's about $94 million. So that's almost 2% of our total revenues in, per mil, so...
So 4.9 and 3.9, they both end up, we're going to go to the ballot once again in three years. So in the fourth year, we have the money to cover it, right?
Yeah. And hopefully through some good breaks or something out of the ordinary, some opportunity. Bill says, though, you only get those opportunities once. Once you use them, they're gone. But if there's some new opportunity, perhaps, but otherwise, we become normal again. We're like every other school district in the state of Ohio.
Dan, I like that you put in that 2% less expense. I like looking at that sheet.
Yeah.
Because we do tend to trend conservatively.
It seems like we're making a decision on hope and prayer.
Yeah, that's the truth.
I mean, it's a tough crystal ball. I think Dan's is a little more clear than any of ours.
Lots of variables.
Well, and, and the key is our voters, with that affordability issue. I, I don't know if, if the extra thirty-five dollars per hundred thousand, someone lives in a two hundred thousand dollar house, an extra seventy dollars a year would make the difference between a yes vote and a no vote. I don't know.
Well, and throw in the fact that we never know what we can count on from the state.
Yeah.
Or the federal government.
We're, yeah, and that's one of the things.
Exactly.
I changed my formula to assume no cuts to be a little more optimistic, where I used to assume the worst case. But I, I would be startled if it's more money.
And also, on the other end, you don't know what other mandates we're gonna get that we're not paying for.
It's true. I think it used to be healthcare that was the biggest moving target, but anymore...
Yes.
Thankfully, you've managed that exceptionally well, Dan.
Wow.
I know, there's only, I mean...
So, yeah, part of it's that affordability factor. When you think about the voter deciding if they're gonna vote yes or no, coupled with the voter fatigue discussion that you had voted with, with our need. We're not, we're not gonna have a run of twelve years again, is the only thing I would say with a lot of confidence.
And to dovetail on Jenny's comment, we're well positioned to avoid the ACA Cadillac taxes.
Yes.
Okay, so that won't be a factor for us.
Correct, with, with this year's rate, we know will be much lower than we, that buys us at least a year and a half. I think Matt was very clear as we worked through bargaining and both with the district-wide insurance committee and through collective bargaining, that we're not going to pay the Cadillac tax, that we're gonna bargain plan design changes rather than write a million dollar check. And I think everybody understood and may not like it, but realizes that's the reality, so, yes.
Good.
Dan, not to put you on the spot, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Do you have a comfort level, either way, or?
Yeah.
I'd be curious to hear.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it just from the data standpoint, not from the individual voter's standpoint. Again, when I go back to the research we had done, whether it's four point nine or five point nine, average statewide passage rate doesn't change. The affordability issue that came up in our community survey, I don't know where that sensitivity point is. Again, another mil is in our thirty-five dollars a year to a homeowner. So the difference of, on that, from one hundred and seventy-one to two oh six on a hundred thousand or double it for two hundred thousand, I don't know where, that's, that's the, the big question of where it is.
I was thinking that the average property valuation is more than one fifty?
I think the last I saw, my, my, I'm relying on memory here tonight, so I, I'm subject to confirmation. I, I do believe it's between one fifty and one seventy-five, somewhere. If you look at the community as a whole, certainly Menon and the Lakes, different community than Menon, different than Concord. So it's, again, the average, pick that midpoint, but my memory says it's somewhere between one fifty, one seventy-five.
So for most families, it won't be twice the hundred thousand valuation, but something else in there. So did Burgess have, other than looking at historical trends and our patterns, when they, did they do some community focus to talk about numbers, or they did not?
No, we've not engaged them yet to do the levy campaign. That's something that has to be funded by the levy committee. We've used them for the general community engagement to primarily focused on, do people know how the district's evolved and where it is, what's their feeling about the school district? Is it serving the needs of the community, those types of things? What, in general conversation at lunchtime, what they'll tell us is what you intuitively believe. The smaller the millage rate, the more likely you are to pass. But as far as, they don't have brackets to define that sweet spot, it's more that general, that the economy's still not where it was pre-Great Recession. There is sensitivity to affordability more so than ten years ago. But it's, that point is different in every community.
Certainly, the feedback from the survey validated the direction the district's moving.
Absolutely.
And that there was general agreement from respondents in the community that they liked what was happening, they felt it had value for students. And that would be a real positive and hopefully gain financial support. 'Cause you wanna maintain what you've established.
Yes.
If I could just reiterate something that Dan mentioned early on. In the history of our ballots at Menon Schools, other than PIs, we had one three point oh in two thousand and three. We had a four point five back in ninety-five. And the rest, we had a four point nine in ninety-two, and the rest were higher.
Yeah, the four point five defeated once, twice, and passed on the third time.
Correct.
The three point oh passed the first time.
But even if, if it's too low to generate anywhere close to enough to sustain your need, it's an exercise in futility, given the cost, both in, in manpower and the, the funds that you have to raise in order to run a ballot.
We had a seven point four in two thousand and eight that passed on the first try. And we had an eight point eight four in two thousand and thirteen, renewal. Right, renewals.
Yeah.
Seven point nine in two thousand and four defeated the first time, passed the second time.
Are there, I didn't pay attention to see if there was new operating money, whether or not it passed during...
New operating?
A presidential general, or, like how that comes?
Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but Citi's also gonna have two initiatives on the ballot at the same time.
They're talking about it, yeah.
One is, one is the zoning for the wellness building, will be on the ballot with us. And then the other one would be to make one of their collections permanent, I believe.
In March?
Absolutely, the two percent.
Yeah. In March.
The income, income tax?
Income tax, two point oh.
They also may have a levy.
Well, that's gonna pass.
I'll just...
They, they also may have a levy.
Yes.
The...
They're talking about a road levy next year. I don't know if it's gonna come that early, though.
I think it's still in discussion.
And we're doing, we're thinking about a five year, rather than a permanent, correct?
We're talking continuing, five year, correct, is what we're reading towards?
Five year, not a continuing.
Okay, you don't want it to go way too soon.
That's another, that's another decision to run today.
I was just looking at the times that they ran.
Yeah, so Dan, from the state sampling that you provided, school tax, tax levy analysis.
Yeah, that's interesting, because at six, six to seven, it's fifty percent. And you go down to a three to four range, it's sixty-one percent. Go over four, four to five, and suddenly it's fifty-one percent. That's a big drop from voters being positive. And again, these were voting patterns pre-Great Recession, but I'm not sure that would change a whole lot if they were updated today.
To me, one of the things is like, what pain are we gonna tolerate? Fail, pass, fail, fail, pass. If we do fail, fail, pass, where does it put us when we finally go back again after fail, fail? Do we now have to make that an emergency levy?
That, that will be more of a campaign call, I think, if we change the levy type, that the fiscal need will be dictated more by the revenue that can be generated. And of course, part of the dynamic that we talked about in our very first work session was that the board, over the last three years, has evolved to a position that a lower millage amount's better than a higher millage amount. And, and that was an abstract discussion, we didn't put a value to it. And then we added dimension of time. The sooner you ask, the smaller amount can be, the longer... If we wait until two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, when we're close to that big deficit, we would need a much larger amount simply because there's less time left to do it. So part of the notion that led us to a levy in March of two thousand and sixteen was by having the three years, or with some good Fortune Four years, allows us to have a smaller amount. So all that's getting back to, if, if we, if you go through that failure, 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 the one advantage to March is we'll have some certainty on our fiscal status before we finalize a budget for next school year, which is one of the three years to make whatever adjustments we need. If the board comes back a year from now and we have a levy pass it, do your darndest, find some extraordinary things to do to balance nineteen twenty. Well, again, the longer we have to figure that out, the less painful it is. Versus if, if a levy doesn't pass until either August or November, the other two election date this year, we've already set everything in place for sixteen, seventeen, we lose one year of opportunity to make an adjustment. So again, time's a factor of consideration, too. And that was part of the reason I think we leaned it on, let's go in March. Worst case scenario, we have two more tries and, and we don't lose two years. That if we wait until November and loss and don't pass a year, not only do we lose a year of revenue, but then we're bumping into the planning for the seventeen, eighteen school year.
'Cause anything we pass in two thousand and sixteen starts to be collected in January two thousand and seventeen, is that correct?
Correct, it's tax year sixteen to be collected seventeen. Our fiscal year's July first to June thirtieth, so we would receive a half year revenue that first year in the sixteen, seventeen fiscal year and then the full year. And that's factored into those scenarios.
And we...
But not until July, right?
Well, collections, taxes are collected on a calendar year basis. So if a levy's approved in March, the tax bills will go out in December sixteen, payable in January. Will provide the first half money, that's the second half of our fiscal year. So we'd receive half of the funds in, in this, the upcoming fiscal year.
If we pass the levy, um... 'Cause I'm just, I'm looking at, we have two presidential years historically for us, but it's long ago, it's twenty years ago. But we had a June, which would have been the primary of a presidential year, of a four point nine that was defeated but passed in November during the presidential election. And then we have a March of another presidential year of a four point five, no continuing, continuing operating levy that passed. And if we needed three attempts, we can still call it the same thing within that one calendar year. There's not a two and out kind of, something in all this.
Correct, both these, both the types of levies we're considering were allowed to request three times in a calendar year. So all three of the, normally, there's four election dates in a presidential year. February, May are condensed, the Super Tuesday and, and March, so there's three attempts. Either one, we can attempt three times to pass a levy, all for tax year sixteen when collections begin in January of seventeen, yes.
So what do we think about the three point nine and the six point nine? Should we stay with the mil, too, or?
I think so. Well, it looks like we're gonna end up at a deficit at the same time. It's just a matter of how much.
Yeah, whether it's fourteen million or eight million, based on the scenarios right presented. And then, again, if the board a year from now says, look for those extraordinary opportunities, even though there's fewer and fewer of them left, looking for eight million's a different mission than looking for fourteen million.
I think we should throw out three point nine.
I agree with, I agree with that also. Dan, you wanna make your case for three point nine?
No, I just said, don't throw it out, you need to talk about it.
Yeah, I just think it's...
It's too quick to throw it out.
I'm really leaning towards four point nine. I, I think that it's...
I think it's very durable compared to other...
I do, I do, too. I think if we're gonna go on the ballot, we need to give it a good try. I think we need to make it worth our while. I'm, I'm worried about five point nine. I think three point nine isn't enough. I'm more comfortable with four point nine. Phil? Amazing. Got any feelings about three point nine?
Well, I still like it 'cause it's low.
You do?
I mean, if I was, out of the three, if I was gonna lap something off, I'd knock off the five point nine. Just, I think it's too high and puts us up against a wall.
All right, do we wanna throw up five nine?
Because I think a five nine would, would fail. It may eventually go through, but I think by the time it would, we'd really, our backs up would be against the wall.
Could pass by November.
Quite, quite possibly.
In November, we'd still collect a half year tax in that school year?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we just have to have it during two thousand and sixteen to collect in certainly January.
Although I am, I am leaning towards four point nine, 'cause a three point nine, if that runs into trouble after it's done, you have a huge deficit to try to cover, which for us would mean just devastating cuts.
Do we have a levy retiring that would have to be renewed? It's gonna run into a...
Time issue.
Mm-hmm.
For the school district or the community?
School district.
Or the community?
No, the...
We'll have to figure out there.
The levy to avoid an operating deficit and the fact, I think we had it, Bill had requested, and we did a summary of the status of current issues. I think it's the very last page in the packet, so before the resolution, just before then.
Was that May seventh, two thousand and thirteen, Dan?
We, our next levy to renew is the, to avoid an operating deficit, it was passed last year, and that was for a ten year period of time. So we go out until two thousand and twenty-three before that levy expires. So for the school district, we converted the permanent improvement levy to a continuing levy. All other levies are continuing levies. The one that's a fixed term now will expire at the end of two thousand and twenty-three.
All right, how's this? Is three point nine gonna be enough of a sense of urgency for the voters?
That's an excellent point. It's not what we need, and I just...
We don't wanna call it emergency, but three point nine just to me sounds low and almost like on the borderline of, do they really need it?
Couldn't they just tighten up a few things?
Right.
You know, make kids...
Four point nine to me says, you know what, it's been twelve years.
And we needed some money.
We don't wanna go too low because we don't want them to underestimate the need.
Absolutely, 'cause it, it would be underestimating the need. It does not address what the budget requires to move forward in a reasonable way. So could you review, Dan, the, the five year versus a permanent?
Yes. The, the first of the two levy types, I think we've decided to discuss, is for current operating expenses. Our options are any number of years to a maximum of five. So you can put it on and say it's a levy for two years, let us prove we need it, and then we'll actually renew it. Or you can, most people will go to full five years if they choose a fixed term, and then it has to be renewed, no tax increase, but you're back on the ballot. The option is to ask for a continuing period of time. It's a, you vote once, you never vote again. And again, with the exception of our fiscal crisis two thousand and four, that's the type of levy we always ask for in this community. A levy to avoid an operating deficit can be for anywhere from one year to ten years. It cannot be continuing.
And, so to avoid the operating deficit... And, so to avoid the operating deficit was... So we could do a 10-year on that?
Yes, that's correct.
I kind of agree with what Mary said. If we do a levy to avoid the operating deficit and only ask for 3.9 mil, we're going to say...
That's not serious.
Yeah.
Current expenses, if we did that levy for 3.9, I think it sounds something different, but I still don't think it's enough money.
Yeah, I think avoiding an operating deficit in a 10-year, I don't know that that would make a difference.
And the only other difference in the ballot language is to avoid an operating deficit, it will have the dollar amount that the school district will receive, so if it's...
Correct.
Is that the way you would prefer it, or would you prefer the millage?
I don't know. I don't think most people know what a millage is, to be truthful.
Well, we don't have a lot of vacant land.
4.9 would raise 5,559 a year, so that's the amount that would be for 4.9.
I'm sorry, Deanne, how much for?
8,559,182. So the question would be, will you vote yes or no on a levy, a 10-year levy to avoid an operating deficit to provide $8,559,000 for current operating expenses? In essence, that's what it would say. Versus continuing levy would say, will you vote for a 4.9-mill levy for current operating expenses, which will cost $35 per...
Hundred pounds.
I think they do a $1,000 increment, so 35 cents per $1,000 of value.
So if we did the, like, let's say a 10-year to avoid an operating deficit, because we don't have a lot of land waiting to be developed, there's some, but not a lot. We're going to have 800 children suddenly, and that's a separate issue, anyway. But it also protects against, if there are some variations in valuations on commercial property or other property, we don't collect less. It's fixed, we don't get more, but you also don't get less, which makes it easier to plan.
And our, deciding factor for some districts, and it doesn't apply here, is borrowing authority. Districts that are absolutely out of money and desperate, you can borrow 100% of the first year's proceeds of a levy to avoid an operating deficit. You can only borrow 50% for continuing expenses. So for many districts, their decision is, they're already facing a deficit. They need to borrow part of the money immediately, and that's a decision point that they consider. For us, that doesn't have any need to be part of the decision process. It's, does one seem more appealing to the other? If you wanted to have a continuing levy, then we only have one option. If you say, we've demonstrated we're good stewards of the public's money, we've been fiscally prudent, you know, we've had a remarkable run. You can, you know, we have high credibility, and it's kind of validated in community survey. We want you to support us as you've historically done, and we're done with it. Versus, many times, districts will do the fixed term because they don't have that community credibility, and they feel that, give us a chance to prove to you that we'll do the things we said we would do, that we'll be fiscally prudent with the money. And then you get a chance to agree or disagree at some future point. Again, I don't think that's necessarily the case here, but this isn't a normal economy yet, in my view of the world.
And what would we have to call a permanent one?
It's just the current operating levy for a continuing period of time, is the ballot language.
And then that fluctuates, so it's based on millage?
Correct, correct. And again, we've not seen a lot of fluctuations in our district. There are some in other metropolitan areas are having remarkable sudden growth. You know, just a lot of land ripe for development, both commercially and residentially, and just things are popping up all over the place. That, our district's much more stable from a tax-based standpoint.
Our days like that are pretty much done.
Yes, there was a time, but yeah, yeah, we're a much more mature community now.
4.9?
4.9. I'm good with 4.9.
Okay, so 4.9, and that leads us then to one, a fixed term, if so. One, up to five years with the one levy, up to 10 years with the other. Or continuing period, there's only one option. So had a 5, 10, or continuing.
One argument in favor of continuing that I would see is, because it is a modest amount, that in the world, you're not going to pay less for a new car, you're not paying less for utilities, you're not paying less for shoes, that the cost of all products across the consumer spectrum grows. So that if you, you're working and you get an increase, you don't want it for just this year. Groceries aren't going to be cheaper next year, chances are. So I think with the modest amount, I could live with continuing, but I don't know...
I'm just a little afraid, because we know that this amount, none of these amounts will get us through the fourth year.
That's true.
So if we go five years, they don't remember that it was five years, but they remember that it was for a fixed period of time.
Oh, I see, because then you could do a renewal.
Rather than forever, you know what I mean? I'm just worried about the forever.
There's one other dimension to that discussion. That, say it's five years, that means in five years, we have to ask the community to renew it. And if it only funds three years' things, so we're on the ballot now, we're on the ballot in three or four years for new money. We're in the ballot five years from now to ask for a renewal. So just, when we say five, yeah, that means five years from '16 and '21, we have to ask for a renewal.
Well, it doesn't have to be five. I just meant in a fixed period of time, rather than forever. I just said five, I'm sorry.
Well, the five is, the one levy, that's the maximum term it can be. We have a renewal in 2023, you know, we'll probably need new money again by 2019. So just, if we go for a fixed term, whenever that term ends, it's one more time we're on the ballot. And I'm not saying that's bad, but just the factor in the discussion.
I just said it so we'd have something to think about, you know?
Well, and the other part of that is, if we go continuing, what if we do need more money? Then how does that work?
Well, as is done historically, and we have to justify that we were good stewards of the money and fiscally prudent, and it's all the state's fault that they keep taking money away from us. And we've told this, we have a revenue problem.
That's what we're doing tonight. I mean, we're going to do the same process.
Deanne, when the city puts theirs up and they're going to make it continuing, will that continuing, if we decide to go continuing, would that language match up with their language?
It'd be very similar, yeah. They have different statutory codes for charter, city, municipality, but on the ballot, it will say for a continuing period of time also. You know, and we have to continue strategically well, as we talk to communities we have. In essence, we're getting the same amount of money that we got in 2003 because of these changes in tax laws. All the revenue we gained from the levy, the 7.9-mill levy, in essence, the state's taken away from us. So even though we've been very fiscally prudent on the things we can control, and that's the spending side, you know, unless that stops, part of our story's got to be, and the reality is, we keep having less money to spend, not because of anything we did, but because of things that were done to us. And, you know, right or wrong, that only leaves the community to cope with that reality. The state's not going to do it, the federal government's not going to do it. It's up to us as a local community.
So, Deanne, is there any reason why we wouldn't do continuing on this?
Only the conventional thinking is, if you're uncertain about the level of credibility in the community, if you're uncertain about the ability to pay, there's some people that believe that by saying it's only going to last so many years, then you get a chance to, say, continue it or not. If your circumstances have changed for you personally as the voter, or if you're uncertain, if you're comfortable with the ideas about how the money's going to be used, that's generally why people will build a fixed term. Again, our community survey validated, I think people believe, and have confidence in the Board of Education, the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee that we talked about tonight, it's a good dimension of, for the community to help be engaged in ensuring fiscal prudence. And our, the credibility that came through, again, you have the better sense of community than I do, but my sense is, our credibility's high enough that whether it was for 5, 10, or continuing period, it's not going to be a major decision factor on someone voting. But you ultimately, you know, think about your neighbors and friends and those you talk to, and if you believe that might be for them.
Well, 10-year fixes the amount. It fixes the amount, has no impact whatsoever on the tax reappraisals. What is it, three years?
Three-year update, six-year full reappraisal, yes. Every three years, there's an inflationary adjustment.
Which one will, which levy will take into account a three-year reappraisal?
The operating levy that can be for up to five years or continuing. Those are two, so if five years are continuing, would allow us to receive revenue if there's growth in the tax base through new construction.
But also loss if things are new value.
Correct. Yeah, if we go into another recession sometime.
So that's a counterproductive one, then, if it goes backwards. But typically, it hasn't.
Yeah, historically, a recession, and I did a lot of research on this when the Great Recession started, typically, a recession lasts about 18 months. The recovery's 18 to 24 months. What happened to us is the most abnormal recession cycle since the Great Depression in the 1930s, that it lasted longer, the recovery's been longer. But typically, it's a significant event, but for a relatively short period of time. So again, we're guessing, will we return to more normal economic cycles? Or will we forever see abnormal cycles?
I think as a community, though, we weathered the recession, the recent recession, better than most.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, the job, there were a lot of job loss. What I saw with the wages, household income, didn't grow, but it didn't slip backwards very much either. Yes, I totally agree.
You know, I think after this lengthy, responsible use of the community's money and doing everything that we could to manage costs, that the 4.9 continuing generates what it generates. And that if, you know, things improved, it just means we'll stretch that out longer and longer. So it's not like something would be used like a windfall. It would always be treated the same prudent way that all the dollars that have come in have been treated. So that the community can have faith that the school district is going to use the money efficiently, as though it was, you know, a finite amount, so...
I think in this report, it's pretty clear that they think, whoever was surveyed here, that we use the money efficiently, and we've used it even in the proper ways. I guess what I was just thinking about, because I don't know the exact numbers, but Menter is, many people no longer have children in the schools. And while they may even have worked, whatever, they want to vote for the schools. With the crazy economy that we've all lived through, once you're retired, I don't know, I'm asking more than, just for discussion, would that word continuing really bother them if they're living on, say, a fixed income now? You know what I mean? They want to do it. And right now, maybe they can afford it, but they're not really sure what's going to happen five years from now. That's just something to think about.
And since you posed it as a question, I'll observe a couple of things I've learned over the years, and I think the survey touched upon. One is, the affordability question isn't dependent on, for how long do I pay it? It's more the, on Election Day, the affordability issue. Also, in the survey, it validated what I've seen throughout my career in many communities. People have a strong belief that the value of their homes tied to the quality of the school district. So even though folks are retired, and I've seen the median age, I think the last city data I saw has increased about just under two years in the two, from the 2010 census to 2014 informal data they had. Even the empty nesters or those that have retired have this very strong belief, my largest single financial asset is my home, and I need to protect that. And the way I protect it is support the schools. Because if the schools go down, the value of my home goes down, that's my biggest asset. So there's, that thought process goes both ways. And I'm not saying which one it necessarily goes. Some will say, that financial need question, I'm a fixed income, and if I project this out the next 10 or 20 years, that's a real push for me versus I'm protecting my home from losing value, and that's my biggest asset.
I'd like to say that the sweet spot seems to be between 13 and 14 mills, because 100% of them...
Okay, I think we need to make a decision. So I, what we're going to do, I think.
Deanne, do you remember the term of the May of 2013, the 8.84-mill renewal? Was that for five years?
10, 10-year renewal, yes. We lengthened it from five to 10. The original, and the first two renewals were five, we lengthened it to 10 and had a remarkable... And that's the other positive thing. You see, in 2013, again, we were out of the recession officially, but things still aren't great. We had a 73% approval rate, the highest since 1980, whether it's new or renewals for the school district. So I think that validates the community survey, that people believe we're being good stewards of the money, we're fiscally prudent, and are comfortable with it. So to me, that was very remarkable, the 73% rate, even though they were renewals.
It's likely to be a good turnout in March.
Yes.
Why would that be?
I think it's a more lively election season, and maybe seven years have been a little more...
Presidential primary.
Presidential primary, it's Super Tuesday. And I think there's so much controversy surrounding it, it's going to make a big turnout.
Yeah, and conventional wisdom is, the higher the turnout of those voters are not faithful voters, the additional turnout generally is favorable to education. Again, it's conventional wisdom, it may or may not apply at this time around. But generally, a larger turnout's a good thing as it relates to schools.
If I had to decide, I'd say 4.9 mills continuing.
4.9 continuing.
Sounds good.
I'm worried about the continuing, but I agree with 4.9.
And based on the research, the word continuing is not the tipping point, it's the number. And the good thing is, in Menter, if you look at the tax burden for homeowners compared to many of the communities around us, we have a very modest tax bill going to homeowners. Not the entire community, but the city of Mena, because of the amount of industry and commercial...
You don't have some of the services here that they do in other communities.
But I think people are generally pleased with...
And I'm not saying that they're pleased.
It is relatively lower.
It is low.
The whole pitch may street, and that's pathless. Oh, yeah. Two ice rices and three quarts.
So then there was a down to one of the two kinds of levies that we have to choose from if we want to continue.
Well, if it's continuing, when there's only one option.
It's current expenses, okay. And, you know, really, that does reflect the truth.
It's good.
Yeah, that, it's been winnowed down to what we could possibly do to, you know, manage with the money we had, to provide a basic education with the kinds of resources that we know are good for students. good for students. That's what it costs. So it's continuing current expenses.
I agree.
It's an honest reflection of what's needed.
Dan, is there anything else you need from us?
I will make a copy of the resolution that is, as I had shared with you, both types of levies are a three-step process. The first is a resolution of need that we would approve tonight. The second is for me to get a certification from the county auditor, and then the third will be, we predetermined we would meet December 15th at 7:30 a.m. for the final resolution you would approve to request the Board of Elections to place this on the March ballot. So if you give me just a second to make photocopies so you can see the resolution we're voting on that I've marked up, and then I believe we have other, one other action, I think we'll be set.
Yeah, you didn't have to really find out. We're just starting to work. Can I get a second?
Here, we have more.
Jenny?
But I think it's. Do they take 10 days, 10 calendar days or 10 working days?
Pardon?
10 calendar days.
The county auditor, they have 10 workdays, but I'm going to get it tomorrow, and they agreed to certify it tomorrow.
I only have one also.
There were two, those are separate documents?
Yes, this, I filed this tomorrow. I'll receive an auditor, oh, here, there's only one for tonight. Yes.
Oh, there's only one?
Yes.
We have it.
Yeah, okay.
We're good then.
Yes, there's only one for tonight.
Okay, now we're going to return to the regular board meeting.
Yes, okay, I'm ready. So we have before this resolution that would request auditor certification with the ultimate goal of placing on the March 15th, 2016 ballot, a 4.9 continuing for a continuing period of time general expense levy.
Still moved?
Second.
No, we need a motion from, is that all right from Dan? Well, you present the motion?
Jenny, Jenny made the motion.
I made this.
Jenny did, and.
Yeah.
Jenny moved the motion?
I made the motion based on what Mr. Wilson shared with us in our discussion.
Yes, and the document.
Jenny, Mary.
In front of you, yes.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
And then, I believe as a result of your executive session, you have one other item.
We need a resolution?
Yes, please.
Bill, Mary, resolution for compensation. We need a resolution.
Do you want me to recite what we.
Did you have some slides?
Second.
I apologize, I didn't get right up. It's my understanding, you wish to vote on resolution to increase the superintense compensation by his base salary by 2% effective August 1st, 2015, to increase my base salary by 2% effective August 1st, 2015, and to grant me a 2% performance stipend for my performance in 2014, 2015.
Someone, second.
Call the roll. Sally, Mary.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Tutt?
Yes.
I believe that completes everything.